Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Well, it's just so delightful to how people in person have been muted or spacious or squares. And I am really thrilled to be here, the first meeting of my year in life. So, this is the Board of Directors' special meeting. We'll buy video conferencing and because I'm in life at Clackamas Fire, we are always here for you. What does that mean? We value our people and people we serve. Our focus is establishing teams, trust, empowerment, accountability, mindset, and service. This special board meeting of Clackamas Fire District is now come to work at 1:01 PM per ORS 192.610 to 192.690. For ORS 192.650, this meeting is being recorded. The video recording of this meeting will be placed on the Clackamas Fire website. Chief Brown, are there any changes to the agenda?
No, sir. The agenda is as written.
Ariel, do we have anybody sign up for wide public comment?
We did not.
So with that, we have a business action item. Chief Brown and Brian Stewart.
Thank you very much. I'm gonna turn it over to Chief Stewart.
Yes, thank you. Good afternoon. This afternoon, we're requesting that the Board of Directors approve the agreement by between the International Association of Firefighters Local 1159 Battalion Chief Unit and the Clackamas Fire District. This contract would be effective July 1 of last year through June 30 of 24. As the board is aware, the entered negotiations February of last year with both the both units of the locals, the firefighter unit and the battalion chief unit, the board has ratified the firefighter unit agreement back end of last year, and we continued on with negotiations with the B C unit. The B C unit negotiations went into mediation. We held one mediation session and then able to resolve things between the two parties and came to an agreement which the local ratified on April 12. And with that, you have had a couple of recent video sessions that we've discussed this agreement in, and you have the full agreement in the packet today. Kevin, any questions?
Hello, directors. Does any board member have any questions? Comments? Why we are in motion? For the board to approve the collective bargaining agreement for the local 1159 Battalion Chief Unit. Chris moved.
Jay moved.
Oh, Jay moved.
I'll second.
Chris seconded. Ariel, please call the room.
Marilyn?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Motion passed. Thank you. And Chief, is there any other items to discuss?
There's no other items to discuss.
Hearing none, the special Board of Directors' meeting is now adjourned at 1:04 PM. Focus meeting.
So, quick question, being that it does say 1:15 on the, we have to wait till 1:15? We do have to wait till 1:15? Okay. Respect for Raven meeting. Okay. Anybody know if we could get right into the work session?
Chris, do you have any thoughts?
Seems like because it said 1:15.
We should wait.
Is it on the website?
It is on the website. It says 1:15.
That's the case, let's come and greet our guests. I'm Thomas. Good afternoon. This is the Board of Directors' work session for Clackamas Fire District 1. I want to thank everybody for coming on the Zoom or who are live here. This is a new experience for all of us, and we are training ourselves to behave and participate. With that, our work session of Clackamas Fire District 1, Board of Directors will now come to work at 1:15 PM per ORS 192.610 to 192.690. For ORS 192.650, the meeting is being recorded. The video recording of this meeting will be placed on the Clackamas Fire website. Ariel, do we have anybody sign up for public comment?
We did not.
With that, Chief Brown, future funding presentation discussion.
Awesome. Thank you, Thomas. Really, really appreciate it. For the last few months, we've heard Board President Thomas Joseph speak to a future funding task force. We've had some updates that we've we've delivered at a very high level at some board meetings, just on progress. And before we get going, I just wanted wanted to introduce who was on that that future funding task force. Leading that was was Director Chris Hawes from the board, Assistant Chief Steve Dieters, a local 1159 Clackamas Fire Shop steward, Andrew Gourian, and then myself. And we've also brought in through the conversations, Operations Chief Dan Mueller. And he's gonna be with us here via Zoom. And then Coastline Public Relations Firm Principal Strategist Chris Edmonds. We're grateful to have him with us today. And we also have A C Stewart and CFO Whitaker to aid us in any data or financial questions that there might be. I'm super excited about the opportunity to be sitting here. This has been two and a half years that we've been via Zoom. And so this is our first opportunity to try out this hybrid model and excited about it. Or super excited to be in person and excited for the opportunity to be coming before you today to walk through the collaboration that took place, the teamwork that took place, and all the good work that came from this future funding task force. What you're gonna hear today from this group is is really a lot of what we've been talking about lately is where we are, where we need to go and how we're gonna get there. The the group's gonna share much of the process that we went through, our focus, and ultimately what we're gonna recommend to you as the board that we can hopefully get some consensus on. Before I pass it over to Steve to to start us off, we have been, we've made cuts in our organization. We've had to decrease the internal and external services that we provide. And we've made a lot of hard decisions to live within our needs. The bottom line is is that we need investors, and we need investors to provide the level of service that the taxpayer has come to expect. Because the simple fact is is that we're not gonna be able to build back at the pace at which we desire and that is required of the citizens that we that we serve. And so that is really the why we're here today. I'm excited to turn it over to Assistant Chief Dieters, and and then we'll circle back to me at the end.
Chief. Thank you, Chief. Members of the board. First off, I want to thank everybody that was on the committee that was from the start, and then also that we brought in for, you know, just subject matter experts and certainly Chris as well that came in. It was really great to be part of that. It's the first time I've been part of a committee that did have an elected official, the shop steward and the fire chief. So I really thought because of the makeup of the group, to be completely honest, it was gonna drag on forever. I just thought we wouldn't get anything done mainly because Nick was there. But the the simple fact that we really only met three times, and that was pretty amazing to me, and we went in with with a focus. And it was really, the the focus was, we were, what we were challenged to do is to find out what the focus of what, how we would fix this, what we would do in the future and find solutions. So that's what that's what we focused on. And through through our meetings, in the beginning, we started out really pie in the sky, really sort of unrealistic. But when you're in the moment and you you're believing your own hype and you can do anything, and then we started to realize with Chris's help that we were pretty much on the wrong track, right? We we needed to calm down just a little bit. So that's what we did. Our focus, it really came down to eliminating, and in no particular order, but eliminating the unstaffed stations. And I think we've all been on this journey together for a long time with knowing that 12 and 13 have been, you know, empty for a long time, but the volunteers do a great job. And as somebody that was responsible for getting staffing out there, I know how hard it was and still is today. So that was part of it. And then to modernize EMS, that was another focus that we thought about. And then increase staffing. And then really something that just is sort of the byproduct of that is, along with it, we'd be improving and updating along the way. And so like the chief said, we keep, we've made some cuts. And yes, we can build back. And we've heard from most of the the directors that they want to see a plan to build back. And and we can't, but it's gonna take time and probably more time than what our customers are expecting with the increasing service demands, things like that. So with that, I'll pass it off to Director Hawes and kind of fill some of his part. Well, as Steve said, I I kind of landed this, and I would have thought that it could take us months to get where we did. But we've had a really good group. They've really focused on. It's something I tell people that when you're doing kind of an investigation process or any decision making, first thing you need to know is where you are. If I tell you, you know, I want to get to the airport, people say, how do you get there? And they'll start talking. It's like, first, you gotta know where you are. Because if you use the directions from your house and you're sitting here, you're gonna end up in downtown Lincoln City. So first, you have to figure out where you are. And that's what we did. We kind of sat down and said, where are we? And where we are, I think we're all pretty aware, is in a pretty tough fist spot. Can we build back? Yes. Can we get where we need to be? Maybe. What happens if something bad happens? If we get fires like 2020 or a major incident like that, our reserves could be gone in no time. So what we face is a pretty uncertain financial future that's that's based on, if everything goes wonderfully, we might be fine. And that's kind of not a good way to be. So what we looked at was what are other possible revenue generating streets, streams? And what we've, you know, been looking at is a possible levy and what we could do with that. What we can do is, as Steve mentioned, is we can benefit every area in our fire district in some fashion. We upgrades, we upgrade staffing, we staff two stations that aren't staffed right now, that I've always had a real problem. I can explain to my rural neighbors why they don't have three or four fire stations within five miles of them. I don't know how to explain to them that they have a fire station that's what my fire station in Damascus used to be, which is basically a garage. I think you all are aware that I pushed very hard to merge boring with Clackamas Fire because the station that served my house was basically a garage. There were the fire engine there, nobody to drive, and I didn't think that was acceptable. And so if I had to explain to my rural neighbors and the people I represent out in that area, why those are empty? And and how is that fine when they pay the same taxes I do? I'm pretty good with the English language, and I would need nowhere to start. So we looked at that as something we've got to take care of, and that's one of the things we can do. One of the other things that I've looked very carefully at is how do we build our capital reserves? Because I am very much concerned that if we don't do something to start getting on a regular purchasing rotation for replacement equipment, at some point, wherever we are 10 years from now or something, when those 16 units come, we have to pass a bond again. And I don't, I don't like capital assets that roll being on a bond. If it's a building, I can go for that. But but that puts you in a do or die situation. And if this we could get past, it allows us, because we cannot get the staffing, obviously, just flip a switch and go to full staffing. It allows us to use this money as an operational bond to fund operations, and we can divert some of our general fund to build that capital stream. The numbers mark came up was kind of depending on, you know, all the factors, curvature of the earth and that sort of thing, 15 to 20 million dollars that we can generate for in the capital fund. And I think we all probably understand the impact of that. That's that's a whole bunch. It puts us in a whole lot better place than we are right now. As I said, what we've looked at is benefiting this entire district in some form or another. If nothing else, it were staffing, improving EMS, staffing stations that aren't. And finally, what we looked at, the other one is, what if we do nothing? We can build back as long as nothing bad happens slowly. I don't think we can anywhere get to where we don't have that capital cliff hanging out there 10 or 12 years from now. The the best we can do is what I've been referred to as we can tread water, and that's where we are. I think we're all aware of how we got here and whether whether and how we got where we are, we are where we are. So we kind of looked at this is, how do we? How do we take the district to where we want to be, to where we need to be? How do we serve the community that we're all elected to look out for? And what do we give them for an option to get us there that's that's responsible? And I I think that's what we've done is it's come up with a responsible and practical way to get us away from where we are and to a better spot. And again, I I commend this group. It has been a great collaborative effort with everyone involved. We, everybody kind of put their egos away, put their wish lists away, and just sat down and said, we have a problem. People put us here for a reason to try and figure out what do we come up with? And here we are.
I can I bounce it before I pass over to Dan?
Please.
I I really appreciate that you spoke to that. To my knowledge, I don't know if we've ever really had this kind of a of a working group that's included the local, the Board of Directors and admin. And it it was, it was, it was awesome to see the teamwork. You know, it it's, and how quickly we locked in on the fact of the three things, increasing staffing, right? Getting two staffed fire stations that currently aren't staffed and then modernizing EMS. And and with that, we get to to turn it over to Dan to to get a little bit into what does that mean? What does increase staffing mean? What does the two fire stations mean? What is the modernizing EMS? Thanks, Dan.
Awesome. Thanks, Chief. All right. Thanks, Director Hawes. I thought that was just a great lead into kind of what we're into my my position with this is just to kind of talk about what we're actually looking for, what that means for service delivery within our organization. I think one of the most important things to to mention here is that we're looking at improving our our wall-to-wall coverage within our within our organization, hitting Clackamas Fire from all of our borders. And in order to do that, there's some major components that that I have broken down here. One of the biggest ones is we need to meet the industry standards on staffing. We need four-person companies on our rigs. We recently just shut down five. We're looking with this levy to get those numbers back up on 10 to 12 companies to four-person staffing. That helps with with industry standards, with NFBA compliance, and that provides just an absolute, just a ton of flexibility within our organization on how we deploy. What that also does is with the number of firefighters, increased number of firefighters, it takes less rigs to fill the actual basic requirements for an effective response force, which keeps other available rigs in their quarters. So the the safety component is is also one of the biggest things with four-person staffing. So I wanted to highlight that, that that is just one of the one of the big things that we're that we're seeking here. We've, we've all talked before with the, like Director Hawes said, with the staffing of our rural communities. We're looking at Station 12 out in Logan and Station 13 out in Clark's District. Those are our hardest to reach areas, and we're looking at getting ALS coverage out there 24/7. And then with this, as well as we need to figure out a, we need to figure out a way to keep our, to adapt to the the ever-changing EMS system. And with that, we need to, we need to a way that we can keep our heavy assets available in quarters for the more critical calls, for fires, for more advanced medical calls. So we're really looking at it changing the the EMS system with our response model by going to a lighter model. Just if we, if we were to put one two-person vehicle in service with the lighter model, whether it be a car program or a rescue, we're looking at about 25 to 2800 calls a year that that company could generate if we place it in the right spot. So we're really working on that, on that concept. Overall, what this is gonna do is we're looking around the 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 45 to 52 cent range, and that's about 58 to 66 FTEs to fill all those positions. So yeah, that's kind of where we're at. So just to kind of summarize everything, the industry standards, we we got to get there. We need the flexibility with our response models. We need, we need the service delivery wall-to-wall within our organization. We need to keep our heavy assets available for the more critical calls. And we have to supply the rural staffing. So just in summary, that's kind of what the operations kind of direction is that we're going with this. And obviously, that is very flexible depending on conversations and if this gets turned over to like voter polling or anything like that. So thanks, Chief.
Thanks, Dan. Chuck Stewart.
Awesome. Yeah, I want to echo what everybody else said. This was an awesome experience to be able to work with Director Hawes, Chief Brown, Chief Dieters, collaboratively coming up with ideas together, you know, having that, that having that input on a level ground was amazing. So hopefully, we can continue this partnership as we move forward. I I really look forward to, you know, continuing to talk about this as we implement and even beyond implementation. The the title of the task force was the Future Fund, was Future Funding Strings. So while we're gonna be talking mainly about levies, we also want to continue to focus on grants and other programs that can provide funding. So some of those mainly are safer grants and the apprenticeship program, and we want to see how we can continue to tie those in through the implementation of this and and beyond. So that's one of my focuses. But again, I just want to thank everybody for for this opportunity.
Awesome. Thanks, Cora. Appreciate you. Ariel, will you be able to share your screen so that Chris can have public, can see? Awesome. We'll turn the time over to Chris Edmonds.
Great. Thank you, Chief. I've had a great experience over the last few months working with the Future Funding Task Force. I think I'd echo everything else that everybody else has said, that these types of task forces can be unruly, they can take months or years, and and they can be really acrimonious. This, this was really simple. I think this group clearly identified some needs and 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 proposed a solution. And so what I'm here to talk with you about today is how that solution might be implemented. So really quickly about my background. I am the founder and the principal of Coastline Public Relations. We're based in Lake Oswego. I'm a fifth-generation Oregonian, a third-generation Clackamas County resident. My family started out in Maxburg Road on Incorporated area, and we've got sort of closer into Portland every generation. And I've been involved in Oregon politics for, well, gosh, it's gonna be getting close to two decades at some point here. I started my career on Capitol Hill with Senator Wyden. I worked with Senator Merkley, with Congressman Trader over the years. I've worked in various iterations with the Clackamas County Board of Commissioners and in in different shapes and forms over the last more than a decade. Served in the Kipsooper and Brown administration as a lobbyist for the Department of Human Services and entered private practice in 2016. And when it comes to to working with local governments, bonds and levies are are what we consider to be our specialty. We like to work with governments in situations like this where we can collaboratively help think through different options and processes to take care of financial needs. And so with that, we have prepared a report for you that is in your packet that will go into more detail than than what we will cover on this slideshow in front of us. So Ariel, would you mind moving us to the slide two? I think that we're in back. Yeah. It's just a preview.
Yeah.
There we go. That one, that one right there. All right. So right off the bat, I was struck when I, when I met with Brandon and the chief for the first time to learn that Clackamas Fire does not have an enhanced levy. That makes it stand out amongst its peers throughout the region who have a tax base plus an enhanced levy. And compounding that, I've been aware in various conversations for a long time about the compression issues in the tax base in this district. So I I feel like you have three things that are working against you as a district right now. The first is a lower assessed tax value than the comparable districts around here, despite the fact that the market conditions aren't all that different. It's just historical legacy taxes not catching up as quickly around here. Number two, you have compression issues from urban renewal that you are very well aware of. And and then number three is not having that enhanced levy that is continuously providing funding for your operational needs. So I also learned that that budget is a barrier to being able to implement some best practices, whether it's best practices in staffing for rural fire stations or best practices in having adequate numbers of of personnel per fire crew. And, you know, speaking as a homeowner and a voter and a Clackamas County resident, although I'm not in in your district, these are the types of things that are really concerning. So as we started exploring that, it became really clear to us early on that there was an opportunity to explore approaching the voters about a levy to be able to take care of these long-term and persistent challenges because the voters have a shared interest in the performance of this district. Go ahead to the next slide. Right off the bat, when we started talking about a levy with the task force, I made it clear that we believe that there are five rules that successful jurisdictions follow when they pass revenue measures. We didn't develop these on our own. This is actually an outgrowth of some exhaustive nationwide research that was conducted by Hanover Strategies, which is a DC-based think tank in 2012. They wrote a report that's called Strategies for Increasing Support and Local Revenue Measures. We have turned that into, you know, our our guidebook. It's very, it's very dense. So if I, but if I could summarize the conclusions that were reached in that study, it is that successful jurisdictions will, one, demonstrate a sufficient need when when they're going out to request a levy. I think that we have clearly articulated the needs in front of this district today. Number two is that is the revenue measure asking for funding to provide a service or for a facility or other capital improvement in which, from which voters, a majority of voters perceive a direct benefit. I think that having a fire crew show up to your house that's adequately staffed is is very important. Number three is successful jurisdictions limit their spending on essential needs. I'm sure that the chief would would love to have a helicopter in the arsenal or, you know, a few other things. But typically, those are not the items that voters are interested in making investments into. So we really encourage jurisdictions to think long and hard about, are these the most essential needs that we have? Because just like you, you know, when you go home and sit around the kitchen table, you've, we've got to balance a whole bunch of priorities. The house needs a new roof. You need, you know, new windows and siding. The kids need new shoes, and you've got college coming up, plus retirement, right? Plus retirement, right? What are, what are you gonna do? And and people have to make trade-offs in their own life and they expect government to make similar trade-offs. Number four is trust, right? Do you have a strong track record of being able to deliver services? Do you have a a strong uh track record of being able to, you know, manage to a budget and community involvement? Now, this one is one where I understand that in the last year, there've been some budgetary challenges here, right? And um in, I I think that it's something that is, it's worth considering and it's something that's gonna be important to communicate to the community um about why the budgetary challenges occurred in the first place and how a dedicated voter-approved operational levy um would allow you uh to be able to avoid similar circumstances in the future, right? And I think that there's a good, and I think that there is a a really good message there um about uh the shoestring budget that this district has been operating on for a long time. You've been making very hard trade-offs, stupid, having to make reductions. And in that type of environment, even small mistakes that that wouldn't impact other jurisdictions can be magnified. So that, that's something that I would encourage you uh, you know, to continue to not, not shy away from having that conversation with the community. And then number five is, is the, is the uh request for funding affordable for that community? And what affordable means is different in every single community. What, what makes sense for a you know, a request you'd make to voters in Lake Oswego is gonna look a lot different than, you know, if you were in Monitor or or Primeville, um because they're different communities. So uh, you know, I I put them on there because I would, I'd encourage you you know, kind of post these on the wall and just remember at all times, these are the things that we're looking for from us. So um out of the uh future funding task force, a range of staffing needs were identified, which you've already heard. I don't have to go through those again. Um but just to reiterate, when we look at modeling the estimated costs, we're looking at a total annual cost range of between thirteen and fourteen and a half million dollars. And uh and we, we believe that that would require between forty-five cents and fifty-two cents per thousand in advance rate, yeah.
I was wondering, would you, what's your choice? If any of the board members have questions during the presentation, do that now or at the end?
Feel free to ask a question if you have a good question um in mind that's relevant to what we're looking at. Otherwise, if it's a general question, we can answer them again.
Yeah, I encourage you to ask right now.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. So it would require uh somewhere between forty-five cents and fifty-two cents per thousand of assessed value. Um and it's gonna be interesting. We'll, we'll show some comparable districts on the other side and you'll see that that kind of puts you within the range, but at the higher end of the range of comparable districts. One thing I want you to keep in mind is that the uh district-wide median assessed value of two-hundred-and-sixty-six thousand dollars is nearly one-hundred-thousand dollars per home less than, say, Happy Valley's district just right, right across the way. So you're dealing with a, with a low tax base, meaning that a you know, forty-five cents to your homeowners may cost less, less uh in terms of real dollar amounts than it would for somebody who lived in one of these competing jurisdictions. So we and we the, we would uh predict that the annual cost to a homeowner, depending on where you'd end up here, would be somewhere between a hundred and nineteen dollars and a hundred and thirty.
That two-sixty-six, would that pretty low uh for the area? Is that practical when you approach community and say, our price of, then they ask you how many of these homes are in that median value?
So so that's the median value, meaning that half of the homes are actually assessed lower than that amount and half are assessed higher. And one of the persistent challenges that we have, right, and you talk to any jurisdiction around the state or any consultant who does what I do, there's always a persistent challenge in communicating Oregon's property tax system, right? Many voters don't understand the difference between um the uh market value of their home versus the tax assessed value. Um and and so that median tax assessed home at at two-hundred-and-sixty-six thousand dollars may have a market value of seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. Right, for example.
So that would have made some stratification for us.
It requires, so that's why we really work to reemphasize that that's the median assessed value. And for the typical median homeowner, they would see an annual cost depending on on what you ultimately decide to refer, if you refer something. Somewhere between a hundred and nineteen and a hundred and thirty-eight dollars, and that gets you to about ten dollars a month.
But that is, using your numbers, the two-sixty-six, anywhere from an eighteen-point-six percent to twenty-point-five percent increase in the taxes for the fire district.
For the fire district, correct?
You could say, oh, it's only a hundred and nineteen dollars, ten dollars a month, relative to what, you know, using your figures, it's a six-hundred-and-thirty-nine-dollar bill and you're adding a hundred and nineteen dollars to it.
Yeah.
That is a big increase.
Now, I I will tell you that the, the taxes comparable to the rest of the Portland region are are lower for a majority of those in your district. Um it's considered to be a lower tax area.
That's kind of right.
And especially on Incorporated. And 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 the, the second factor is that um you know, that may be something worth exploring in terms of a positive, eh in in terms of a a message, right, that the tax rates are so low that even a modest, very minimal increase is going to reflect a twenty percent increase in their rates. When you look at what districts um are assessing um around the Portland metro region versus what's being assessed here in Clackamas County are because of the compression issues.
Good point.
Yeah, right. You're, you're very low. So you're starting from the low.
Well, you know, in your comparable districts, said in your report, even uh for Twelveth Valley and Candy even when you add in their two-hundred-and-seventy-one plus their base rate, Twelveth Valley's forty cents a thousand below us, forty-three cents a thousand below us, on regular rate without any levy. And Candy is forty cents below us. The only one of your comparables there. Marion County District One is eight cents more than us when they add these two together. So I mean, I'm struggling with your saying, well, everybody else took whatever else, so what? There's still a lot of need. Our tax with forty cents.
I I think that's gonna be what you're gonna have to decide, right, and and ultimately come to that a- assessment. From, from our perspective, when we look at the numbers here, we see that you have some very extenuating circumstances um due to the fact that so much of uh your tax base is locked up in rural districts. Other, other jurisdictions aren't facing that. Similarly, you have a very large geographically spread-out jurisdiction that has a lot of lower-value homes and a lot of higher-value homes. You have to be able to serve those evenly. Um and so one of the things that you may want to do to to help you make some of those conclusions would be to look at total annual funding amounts um and then start making for the, for your competing jurisdictions. And that's a level of analysis that's beyond what we would typically do. We're not financial analysts. Um and and so if you wanted to find that out, you may want to go look at what the total revenue is um per rooftop um and and compare apples to apples that way.
Yeah, the I'm kind of thinking along Maryland's lines too, because I know that some of the rural the rural um homes and businesses in like Carver, Colton, Eagle Creek, Borning, and all this stuff, their assessed values are five hundred plus. Um so you're talking a minimum of two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar increase.
Talking about remark value or assessed?
I'm talking assessed, assessed.
That, that would be a home that's been built recently. Yeah, the other thing to keep in mind is like TBFNR, you're, you're looking at their tax rate and you're looking at their levy rate. What's their assessed value?
I know what my assessed value is, it's a lot more than this.
Your assessed value works into the median of the two-sixty-six that we're talking about. Unless you look at that same number at TBFNR, then you're not making a comparison.
I just know what my text is, that's what I'm charged for.
I know. And you're part of this meeting, so that you're, you're part of the fifty percent that's above that as opposed to the fifty percent that's below it. The point is that unless you know what a TBFNR's, ours, our median is two-sixty-six. I doubt very much that theirs is two-sixty-six. Which means that their dollar ninety rate is getting them a whole lot more money than ours. Ours is at a higher rate because you're putting against a lower assessed value.
No, and I don't disagree with that, Chris. I'm just looking at it from an individual household standpoint, especially in that general community out there. Um knowing what their actual uh assessed values are. So I think some of these areas, these rural areas are really hard. Do you gonna take a little bit of extra marketing?
They also are the ones that benefit greatly with this as well.
Yeah.
That they don't currently have. So that's, that's the purpose of the wall-to-wall, right?
That's the purpose of the ten-to-twelve companies being uh to four-person staffing, to have two stations staff twenty-four-seven that currently aren't. This is truly a plan that isn't just focused on a couple areas of our service area. It is a wall-to-wall increase in service. That's uh but, you know, if you look at the median assessed value, uh sorry, median um real market value within the fire district, it's five-hundred thousand. So that's, that's, and a lot of people will get focused in on that five-hundred thousand as being the real market value. You know your assessed, mine's higher too. Right? But as I look at this, I ate Wendy's yesterday and spent twenty dollars. And that's awful good Wendy's, right? To to get this kind of service to my family and to to my neighbor's family. So.
So this is going to take some pain on our side to come, come to that level.
Say it one more time?
There will be a little bit of a pain in everybody's, it will impact everybody.
It's gonna affect everybody, yeah.
So we need to, this is not going to be a soft sell in the sense we have to realize this is, we are in yes, we are in a situation that we need to tighten our back and do something out of the ordinary to get what we need, service level we need.
Yes.
That's what we have to say.
Yeah, I just had one point to make and then add a question regarding the staffing. I was recently involved in a consulting project in Vermont. In the state of Vermont, the way their taxing system works, the jurisdiction figures out what their need is. Then they present a budget and then citizens vote on it. So their tax rate goes up and down every year because it's based on what your needs are. I look at this kind of as that. If our need is X, yes, we've been used to the two-forty ever since Measure Five, and even our tax rate used to fluctuate pre-Measure Five, people forget that we had the ability to ask for what we needed. And there was a six percent increase built in instead of the three percent. We had a lot more flexibility here in the old days, but that project that I worked on in Vermont really opened my eyes and those agencies, they, the Wilson Vermont Fire Department doubled their staffing from last year to this, this year. It was just a simple going to the public and explaining how understaffed it were, all the issues and the problems. Went to the voters, eighty percent, yes. We doubled our budget from one year to the next and it's all based on what the needs were at the time and how they changed. Regarding the staffing, I haven't heard anything or seen anything about the Crew Board or the Crew Thirty for the Wildland Project. So right now, as I understand that this is the second year of it and soon, so to me, the media reports and the public support that we've gotten from that program are huge. So are we planning on ending that? And with this then, continue to fund that too, because I see that as just like Chris mentioned, some people probably hadn't thought of is this has the ability to build up our capital plant too over time. That's something that we would think of. What about the Crew Thirty? Would this continue to fund that? Bring that is.
Great question, Jim. So I think uh the focus of this levy is strictly on increasing force on apparatus, the twenty-four-seven staffing for twelves, thirteens, and getting uh some light resources in to eliminate uh twenty-five to twenty-eight hundred calls for the heavier assets. What this provides us the opportunity for is then to be able to support Crew Thirty potentially out of the general fund. But I I need everybody to remember that Chief Olson and our pitch initially was that Crew Thirty is we want it to be a self-funded program, and that has been his focus. Now, there are gonna be years where the general fund might help, and this provides an opportunity for us to help out to bridge a gap for Crew Thirty, but Crew Thirty uh is, is creating uh funding streams so that it can be sustaining under its own. What this provides us, that opportunity is for those off-years to be able to keep the program going until the following year it can support itself.
We, unless we have a whole bunch more, we should probably let Chris finish up his presentation, because then we'll have time to have a discussion when he's, when he's all finished.
Yeah. No, and I I appreciate that. And again, we are not, uh, we're not looking at this from a perspective of what you should do or what your operational needs are. That's for this district. And 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 uh you have uh leadership that has worked on this in the task force, and these are the recommendations that they've put forward. Um we are also not uh financial specialists uh or or planners. Um but what we are is uh we uh are are consultants that look at how the public will react to what you put in front of them. And we, and we are looking at this from the perspective of how uh would a request like the one that you're discussing uh line up with the expectations and values of this community? And so we're, so as we walk through this, um just keep in mind, I may not be the best person uh to answer any and every question. Go ahead to the next page. So if you do look at the comparable districts, um we've had quite a, we we've had some extended discussion on this, so I think we can be really brief, but I, I see the, the uh primary comparable between Clackamas Fire uh on this list is, is Marion County District One which uh has a dollar ninety permanent base, so fairly similar to the, to your tax base. Um and they have an enhanced levy rate of fifty-nine cents per thousand. Uh one other thing to note is that Marion County is um a, it's a, it's a more conservative electorate as well, uh which tends to be less uh supportive of tax measures. So the fact that they've been able to effectuate that rate um is something that I I look positively at. So at a, at a broad level, this is uh the process that we would recommend um if you were to develop a levy. Uh you begin with determining your operational needs and priorities, and that's what the future funding task force has looked at. Develop a community engagement process. This is a really important piece. Before anything is referred out to voters, we strongly encourage all of our clients to do exhaustive public engagement. Old listening sessions, we can, we'll address this on a later slide, but that's a really important piece of this. Um once you've gone through a community engagement process and you've received that qualitative feedback from the community and you as a, as a, as a board um and the, the district has determined what it wants to put out for a levy, that's the point that we would recommend, that you run polling to confirm it. And that's a good chance to say, okay, we've, we've determined our operational needs. We feel like these are really important needs. We've held a community engagement process and we believe, you know, we've heard X, Y, and Z from the public and we've incorporated into our proposal. We think that this is a proposal that lines up with our community, that our, that our community wants to support. At that point, you go out for a poll and and you confirm that you're right. Right? It gives you a chance to um to know uh if you've, if you've hit the mark. And then from that, from that point, that's where you would draft a measured title, a voter-explanatory statement, develop voters' pamphlet statements to put into the community um and begin the process of a more broad-based communications effort um around your levy. So the recommendations that we had based on the inputs that were provided to us Part of focus this levy on the basics. Right? These are some very basic needs that we are discussing here today. Achieving full staffing to national best practices across the crews is, is something that, uh, that most. People can get behind. Um, and then also, uh, with wildfire, um, a- as well as rural and urban, you know, inequity on, on the minds of the electorate consistently. I, I, I think that it will land as a necessity to most of your voters based on my experience. Uh, that adding rural coverage, you know, the station's twelve and it's actually thirteen. Sorry, chief.
You're good.
Yeah. But, uh, stations twelve and, uh, and thirteen, that those are essential needs. We'd recommend, um, that you continuously, uh, if you decide to pursue a levy, that you communicate with the community. The direct benefits that it can expect to receive. You know, a fully staffed crew. National studies that have shown how having that fully staffed crew leads to better outcomes. Um, in emergency response, improved safety, community-wide, um, earlier responses to wildfire coverage. Um, so there are a, a number of benefits that you'll be able to message to the community and we'd encourage you to build a communications effort around that. Speak to them and their needs. Uh, in, in terms of, uh, how a levy is developed. And, and this is the, this is the pathway that it appears that you are on, is to build the levy request around staff positions. Um, there are some other operational needs that jurisdictions like this could fund through a levy on an ongoing basis. I typically suggest, um, you know, that frontline personnel, those who are actually providing the direct benefit to the community. Um, are who you want to put out in front, um, uh, on a levy like this. Um, so you're doing that, you're doing that right. Um, and then finally, this, and this gets to the discussion we've been having, which is ensure that the levy rates. Don't exceed what's considered like a minimal affordable expense for your community. Uh, and in this community, it, again, I would, I would not suggest. You know, a, uh. You know, asking for five hundred dollars a year out of this community. Um, but it's something that can be messaged as a cup of coffee. Um, in exchange for, uh, the same standard of service that their peers are getting. In, in other parts of this region, um, I, I think that that's a, a good message to deliver to them. Next slide.
Chris, on that, uh, I do agree that is a general perception. Exists in that most country, we are paying much less than surrounding areas. So that is to our advantage. So we are not, you know, stand out, night and by, it's all relatively expensive. That is, that is a good, good thing in our favor.
Great. Just really briefly on public involvement to give you an idea of what, when we talk about public engagement, public involvement. What we mean by that. These are open houses. And one of the best things about being a fire agency passing a levy is that firefighters are incredibly popular. In any community that I poll in. I don't believe that there has ever been an exception to this in dozens and dozens of polls I've commissioned over my career. I have never seen, uh, a, uh, in a division of a, a county or a jurisdiction. That ever polls higher than the fire and emergency response. Always top of the charts. Um, I, when I'm, you know. Meeting with jurisdictions who are looking to, uh, you know, increase police funding or. Bond for their library services or any other essential needs. I hear common refrains like, it's so easy for the firefighters because they just show up with their dalmatian and everybody loves them and says, how much do you need? And I'm being a little bit flip here. That's not the way we want to approach this levy and it's not the way that you are. Um, but I think that it's important to know that in those kitchen table conversations about what are our competing priorities. Typically firefighting and emergency response services. Are in the absolutely have to have it bucket. Right? Um, because we all understand what's at stake when we live our lives. You know, I'm speaking as somebody who had my house burned to the ground when I was seventeen years old. And, uh, if it weren't for the firefighters who showed up and risked their lives to run into a burning house. Just to rescue our family heirlooms and our photographs, I wouldn't have baby pictures of myself, right? And I think that everybody has a story like that. They, they have an experience where they were really in need. Um, so that's something that you want to lean into. So do that through your public engagement process. Invite people into the fire stations where they can get a chance to. Um, uh, see where their tax dollars go. Where they can see the needs that are, you know, displayed right there and you have an opportunity to have frontline, one-on-one, you know, communication in group communication with the public. This also gives them a chance to provide feedback around what's important to them, right? Is, how do they rank order or prioritize? Um, you know, rural fire station staffing versus, you know, having fully staffed best practice crews. These are the questions that you should be asking. During a public engagement process. Um, you also have opportunities to do qualitative online surveys. So I, I'm on Nextdoor a lot. I don't know if anybody else here is on Nextdoor. It's a great opportunity to be able to put a qualitative survey out there to residents and say, we want to hear your feedback. Um, we're thinking about pursuing, uh, an enhanced levy. Here's what we're looking at. And then asking them to share some of their values back with you. Equally important though are the ad hoc presentations. This is where you actually get a group. Of communicators together. And go out to the chambers of commerce, go to the senior centers. Um, go to the assisted living facilities, right? Go to the places where people are and you know that you have. Um, interested audiences who are wanting to get information and that gives you a chance to get to them first. To be able to avoid any, you know, miscommunication or, or misperceptions. And those people, those involved already organized groups tend to be the ones who are best placed to be advocates and champions for levy. Right? So you want to go to those stakeholders, um, communicate about the needs, hear any concerns that they have and ask for their support. Um, and, and more often than not, an issue like this will be there for you.
Yeah, if you can communicate to these groups, then they become the ambassadors for the district. They will go on the set of form.
Yeah, exactly. Um, next slide. Almost wrapped up here. So just, uh, this is a high-level, uh, timeline of what a levy development process might look like. Um, we initiated this project, uh, in April, um, and. Uh, our scope of work wraps up here with analysis and recommendations. Um, we'd encourage that you look to the fall for the bulk of this activity. Part of the reason why we, we would say, don't go out now is, is that we want you to, uh. Be able to capture the attention of, you know, a short attention span within the public. Having a year-long conversation is difficult to keep people engaged, to be, keep people energized and motivated. So, you know, we always say, compress your schedule to what you need it to be. Um, and only ask for as much of the voters and the public's attention as you're actually going to require. So, uh, if you started a public involvement process in, in October. Um, and had a public survey that, that went out in, uh, November of twenty twenty-two, you got some scientific information back. And if all of those results looked really good to you. You could finalize a measure, uh, in December of twenty twenty-two, have it reviewed through legal counsel. Um, and then ultimately referred out in February. Um, you could refer it earlier than that if you wanted to. Um, but once a measure has been formally referred to the county elections department. That's where, um, you have to, uh, enter into, um, safe harbor language. So you're working with the Secretary of State's office and anything, any messages or communications that you put out about the levy have to be reviewed. They have to be non persuasive at that point because it's been, uh, referred. You are allowed to be persuasive. In communicating with the public prior to a measure referral. So right now there is no prohibition, you know, for the, for the chief or for staff to be meeting with the public. And explaining what the serious needs are here at the district, what the solution is that you want to bring forward. And what the, what the really strong, you know, reasons why you, you believe that that's the right solution. You can make that case today. Once a measure's been referred, you have to be neutral. Um, as to whether or not a voter should vote yes or no on a community measure.
Chris, going out in October, November. Would that confuse the community with the, this year's election? Now, but now the twenty twenty, twenty election?
Um, typically not, like typically if you think about October, like even in a midterm election. So one, we've seen really low voter turnout. So a- assuming that we end up somewhere in like the. High thirties. Low to mid forties in, in terms of, in terms of turnout. You're going to have half the electorate that's not even paying attention to it at all. But, um, if you think about what October looks like, you've got football games and you've got back to school and. Events at the library and people are getting ready for the holidays and Halloween. And so slotting in, it, you know, community open houses to talk about the needs that exist within the, the fire district, I think would fit. Um, but, uh, you could certainly work around it if you wanted to. That's it. I guess that's it. Opinion preference. So that completes my presentation.
Awesome, Chris. Thank you so much.
I really appreciate.
Really appreciate you coming and doing that. Um, uh, in closing, uh, we have a couple of things and then we're going to open up for, for discussion. Again, I, I just want to thank the task force. Thank you, Chris, for coming, uh, and presenting. Um, I, I've been super proud of this task force. We've gotten a lot of good work, work done and. And again, I mean, I said at the beginning, but we're collaborative and it shows what teams can accomplish. And so I'm super excited about this, this group that we. That we had and Thomas, I appreciate your support for the creation of the task force. Um, but we've had a lot of tough to- topics to talk about, but I, I'm cutting off what we're going to say.
I was, what I was going to say is that. The board. And then with the chief, we believe in inclusivity. That's one of the reasons benefits you see. Andy's here, Chris is here with the staff. It, we are not just saying it, we have done it and an incredible. Time frame, they achieved so much we could not have done. If it was individually separate group meetings, so.
Appreciate that, Thomas. You know, uh, this isn't a new topic. I brought it forward in the fall. And since then the shoe, other shoe fell off. And we had, we discussed other things. Um, we have, uh, we're, we're. We've made the right decisions up to this point. Um, we are on our two feet. But we're definitely at a crossroads as an organization. And, uh, and we're at a crossroads as, as our existence as an organization. And we can stay where we are. And we'll be just that, we'll be where we currently are. It'll be above water, we'll stay afloat. Or we can become who we're meant to become as an organization. We'll be able to provide the level of service that the taxpayers has come to expect. And we'll be able to do so in a manner that will be safe for our firefighters. Um, and, and be, just be able to provide that, that high level of service. You know, the long and, and, and short of it is, is I, I fully support. And believe in this direction that we are suggesting to you. And, and what we need from you as the board, this is the ask. Is what we are seeking is consensus from the board. To pursue a formal levy process. That's to include community engagement as, as Chris walked through, public involvement, test and measure and ask to confirm a levy request. After we got that data. Data. Uh, we would then come and ask the board to refer. The levy to the voters and that would be December, January, February, based on what we. When we get the data, when we get legal's view on the, the ballot measure. Um, and, uh, and, and then, um, and then go from there. I, uh. I appreciate your time and listening to this. And, and I really love to now open up the door to you, uh, for that collaboration and questions, uh, for the group and, and, uh, continue the conversation from here. Jay.
Um, Chris, probably a question for you. I've been involved in the, uh, public sector for well over thirty years. And, uh, one of the, uh. In many public circles, putting personnel on a levy is considered a bad thing because. Don't pass it and according to Chief Mulick's. Data, we would hire, have fifty FTEs within the forty-sixty-six, yeah. Um, we would, if, if we don't pass it in five years, that means. Dramatic backward changes. Now, first of all, I do support this, but I, there's this, this little tickle inside of me that says, if we don't pass this every five years. We, we could be worse off than we were, than we are now. Um, yeah, so what's the, if now that we're at twenty twenty-two. What is, what's, is there's. What's, what am I thinking wrong? Am I thinking wrong? Am I thinking right? Where am I, where am I at here?
Well, I, I think that, I think that you're right, uh, in, in. Uh, in wanting to assess that risk. Um, what I think. I would say in response is if you look at the performance rate of let, of fire. Agency levy renewals across the state of Oregon, it's better than Damian Lord's free throw percentage, I believe. So, uh, you know, I'll put Dame at the line, uh, you know, when, when the game's on the line and if I need him, you know, once every five years to make a couple of free throws, I can. I can count on that, but, um. The argument works both ways, right? If, i- it's not just this agency that would be losing fifty firefighters. Uh, or personnel, it's the community. And I think that gives you a really stark message about what's at stake on a five-year rolling basis. Where the community can understand and they have a chance to evaluate it over the five years. Are we happy with the service that we're provided? Right? Do we believe that, uh, Clackamas Fire has been good stewards of the levy funding that we've provided to them? And, and do we want to, you know, maintain this level of service? And if the answer is yes, they'll, they'll vote to, uh, to approve it. And if the answer is no, they'll reject it. Um, typically we see, um, fire levy renewals passing in the seventy to mid eighties range. So these are some of the strongest performing ballot measures that you can find.
There's a, there's no doubt. That, um. I believe that we can put in a good presentation, a good messaging. Um, and I'll, um. Uh, Chief Brown, several days ago said, I'm a data guy. And everyone's still been on the board and told us to show me the data, prove it to me with the data, not with emotion. Yeah, and Chief Brown's had a really good job, I think, of presenting, uh, objective facts. Um, and some of the different, uh, matrices that he's using make perfect sense to me. And I really appreciate that. And I think to, to a, a, an element that that type of stuff. If we can get that, if we get that stuff out, um, the ten to fifteen that she spent with me the other day was like, well, uh, you know, makes perfect sense. And so I think we get, continue that type of messaging. There's no argument. It's objective data. It is what it is. Um, and so I really appreciated that. But, okay, thank you for that because it's always a, you know, it's one thing to have, get a safer grant where. You have a few years to absorb the staff, but when you, when you're talking about hiring sixty people and then potentially. Laying them off in five years, that just, that, you know, it kind of gets me wound up just a little.
I, I, I hear that and one of the, one of the, the. This does occasionally happen, right? Occasionally you hear, you know, that a school district went out for their levy renewal and it failed by. You know, a half a percentage point or something like that. The sky's falling. But then you always see this, you know, there's always the story six months later where they've got it on the November ballot. Engage the community in a conversation and were able to pass it. Once the community became really aware that it had failed and what was at stake, right? And they, they fixed it, they made it right. And, you know, barring something that I'm not aware of in Clackamas County's home rule charter or in a situation where a levy wasn't renewed in May. You'd have a chance to have a conversation and be able to likely go out for it in November. likely go out for it in November before there were any budgetary impacts.
Chris, would you like to add a couple of words before we have a board members chance because you are the task force from the beginning?
You know, I, I think, yes, thank you. Um, as you all know, I'm kind of unique. I'm the new guy. I, I think I got elected and then about a few days later, I heard about the budget. And apparently you can't go pull your SEL one ninety form after the election and that's been hell. You're, you're kind of, you bought it off and paid for it. I'm probably as big a fiscal hawk as you could find. I'm a cheapskate. Um, I don't like asking people for more money. But what I would put to my fellow board members, if, is the basic question, if not this, then what? Because the choices are, we go with the status quo that we're in right now. And hope for the best. I, I would just assume not have to do this, but I don't see an alternative to it. Apart the election, uh, Marilyn, you weren't here yet. I, I sat in on, as it is, onto another service agency. And I watched them go through three budget meetings. Where their financial officer told them they needed to raise their rates twenty-one percent to do some DEQ mandated updates to their treatment plan. And they didn't do it. The, what they mentioned most often was they need to get reelected. What they missed is three years out on their own budget projections, it shows their beginning fund balance going negative. They're gonna go bankrupt. And you may very well get service from that agency. And to me, what I was watching was, remember my thing? First, what's best for the community? Second, what's best for the organization? Us getting reelection? That's a number three, I wanna hear about. In four years, three years from now, I'll stand for reelection if I decide to based on the decisions I make on this board. By looking out for one and two. If, if what I've done doesn't make the community happy, I guess they'll vote to put somebody else in. But I can't make decisions based on my political viability. It, it just doesn't seem like taking care of the community and this organization. So in a perfect world, would I like to not do this? Yeah, I, I'd really wish the chief would check his backyard for the money tree one more time, but he says he's looked. So here we sit. Thank you, Chris.
Jim? We just got through a very difficult budget process. But I agree with Chris, we're, we're okay, we have a balanced budget, it's a good thing, but we're not saving for the future. Which this could accomplish. We still have two stations in their rural areas that are unstaffed. Two times that I ran for election, that was my platform, the rural areas need to be served. I support the rural areas. The volunteers have done the best job they could staffing those stations, but it's still what it is. Uh, and uh, it would be nice to have two thirty as a permanent program here, that we have the ability to fund it if needed. We just cut five communities back to a three-person company, when four-person staffing, as we all know, is seventeen-ten, it's the standard, so. We're, we're okay, but if we have the ability to move forward with this tool, we just put a task force together. If there's anyone I trust with numbers and elections, it's my colleague, Mr. Hawes. He's taught me a lot over the years about election, public and fiscal uh, issues, so I trust Chris, I trust our staff who worked on this, the union was involved, a consultant, so to me, you all did a great job showing the need and then now it just comes to an election. You probably heard me say a few times too, I would never willingly withhold an election from the citizens if there was any issue, whether I agreed with it or not. In this case, I would always support moving this forward to an election in May. It is the same time that three of us are running, but I, to me, that's a different issue. The needs of the district will be on the election. At the same time, we have the ability to have a platform where we agree with their support, so to me, they're separate, they don't really the same. So in the end, I would support moving it forward, but if we do, I saw presented a range of numbers, forty-five cents to fifty-two cents. I even heard in discussions, it was maybe up in the sixties or as low as in thirties, so whatever that right number would be, I would say, make it what we need. And don't go cheap, we learned through old bonds. We, oh, we don't wanna ask for too much and we went cheap and then we ended up running out of money. And we built Station Seven on the first bond out of general fund money, I think, because we ran out or we get a loan. And we, and then the same thing, that was Bond One, well, that Bond Two, we ran out, so uh, I would say, if we're gonna do this, find out what that right number is and let's ask for the good amount, but whatever, whatever it is, doesn't matter, but make it, then we can fully support it in what the need really is. The polling, uh, I went on the Secretary of State's website the other day and went county by county all around the state. I was just curious, hey, I wonder who else in May, just last month, went for levies or bonds? Every fire department in the whole state passed whatever they all had. And most of them were by pretty high numbers, so I just kind of thought, oh, I wonder what the pulse is, could you talk about polling? This is a big number, it's higher than Twelton Valley's, when you combine everything, I totally, I agree. And I agree with Chris, gosh, to tell my neighbors, you know, we're gonna have two ninety-something potentially for your rate or, but different communities are different, Twelton Valley's assessment is billions and billions and billions more than us. That's why they have a lower rate. We're, we're what we are because we have all these small districts joined together, spread out like he's mentioned, so our tax rate is what it is because of different reasons. So I, again, I go back to what is the need and if you take the need like other states do and then you figure out what your tax rate is, so. That's my.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you, Thomas.
You have been so patiently waiting. I knew you had questions.
Well, I, I, um, I believe it clearly we need to do something, this is a financial framework in the process. And we need to take a stand. I'm not sure that the numbers and the needs that are demonstrated or set up are correct. Um, I think we're confusing equity with equality, we're saying, well, everybody has to be, we're gonna have to have four everywhere, irrespective of whether you need four people there because equity demands. But equality does. Equity would say, let's give everybody what they need. Logan and Clark's only need to have a certain number of people there, maybe they don't need half four people there twenty-four seven. So why are we saying we have to fund them twenty-four seven with a fourth?
We haven't said that.
We're not.
Well, that's.
No, they're just staffing it twenty-four seven. We have never said four-person staffing.
Whatever, I think that some of those costs can be contained by dealing in a more equitable manner. Buzzwords of the year. But, uh, for repeat, equitable says give them what they need. Equality says our biggest segment. And this is not one size fits all, every station is not the same in our own district. Three has different demands than twelve. So, I think that, and we need to make that analysis in deciding whether we need fifty-eight more full-time employees, which based upon these figures would be an average salary of or average cost of employee of two hundred and twenty thousand dollars per employee. Which is fine if that's, that's what it costs, but we need, I think, to refine a little better the actual needs. And um, I, I respect Chris and Steve and everybody who has done. Andrew, Steve and Andrew, um, was served on the task force, should have, have done a great job and do it at your expense and time and it's, it's admirable. But, and I would be in favor of moving this forward to the next step to uh, follow the path that Chris has set about, you know, let's test it out and let's see it, but I would like to see these numbers refined a little bit more. Um, rather than just saying, well, we need, we need to double our work, we need to have fifty-eight employees. Just because that will put four on three shifts in twenty stations. And is that really what we need? Now, I'm not telling you what you need, that's up to Dan, but um, that, you know, if it is, it is, but um, I'm, I think that last approach to just say, wow, we gotta put this many more people at every station, no matter what their calling is. Maybe, not that we have place for that, but maybe some stations need more than four people. And um, and in addressing the medical needs too, so somehow I would say that um, you definitely need to take some action. I think you need to at least take the next step and see what the response is and and I don't know, may have Christian remember a few years ago, he made it, that's how or somebody, they did do a testing and public said, no, we won't pass it, so they never went to the ballot with it. And I think that that's a good thing to know. And until we get there, we won't know whether our people left, but I certainly also do not want to diminish the cost that we're asking our taxpayers to pay, an additional eighteen to twenty percent in taxes to the fire district. Plus the three percent increase that they'll get as a minimum, so. Um, I think the emphasis should be, uh, we, we've done some sacrifices that our people are making in order to obtain this, uh, very critical life-saving option.
You're spot on, Mary.
Thank you, Marilyn.
Can I, can I just, uh, in, in, in a, in a circus like, in a meeting like this, we, we stay fairly higher level, you know, I, we don't have all the data maps so that you can see all the work that went in behind the scene, right? And so, um, as, as we uh, work through this, everything that you just said, everything that you said, everything that you said, everything you, we all talked about those things. There is fear of having the amount of people on a levy. Especially when you calculate out, you forecast out, how many people will be retiring at that timeframe, right? And, and so that, that adds some fear. Here's a liar, okay? And that's what I'm gonna tell you, this is a liar. Uh, uh, but it exists and we all had that same feeling. Every single one of us looked at each other like, whoa. Uh, to speak to you, Marilyn, we went all over the board with this, we started here. We went to here and we really narrowed this down based on data and based on response needs and based on those three categories that we wanted for, for the citizens and what we needed to do to provide that level of service. And that was our focus. We understand the hardship, this uh, is gonna potentially be on the investors that we're going out to get. But this is the bridge that we need from those investors till we can get the AB. Our military is a good military. Our problem is assess evaluation. If we had Twelton Valley's AB, if we had, uh, we wouldn't be talking right now. But we don't. So how do we bridge that gap until we get there? And this is what we brought for you to do so. And how sweet is it gonna be for the long-term strategy to then in fifteen to twenty years, this organization, go back to the taxpayer and say, hey, we're able to go the other direction with this levy because the assessed valuation has started to catch up.
And that will never happen.
Well, I, I, I beg to differ. I think it's going to, I believe it will.
Because the needs will always exceed the amount of money that you're coming in.
If you do it right, Marilyn, I think that uh, I think that if, if, if we were asking for pie in the sky, it'd be different. We're not asking for pie in the sky. If, if we were asking for pie in the sky, you would see uh, additional fire engines with ladder trucks, additional fire engines with, with heavy rescue. We are asking for four-person staffing in, in certain apparatus, we're asking for two areas that, that are underserved right now. And, and we're looking at, at taking some of the heavy, the beat up that some of the heavy apparatus are getting uh, on some of the calls. And I, I believe this is the way and I believe it is that measured approach that you're, that you're, that you're talking about. And so that's, that's, we, we set that range. The reality of it is, is fifty-two cents is what we need. That's just a simple reality. And so, uh, but we wanted a little bit of room to, to have some, some conversation, but that's what you asked, right? You asked, what's the need? And that's the need, it's fifty-two cents. Chief, can I also chime in here? So I, when Chief Brown first introduced this to me a few days ago, weeks ago, whatever it was, I went into this with a lot of trepidation, to be honest, I really did. And when I asked Chief Brown to show me the data, show me the objective data, where are you getting these numbers from? And he probably went a little deeper in the weeds than he wanted to, but he was trying to police the data, data part of my brain. And once he started doing that and he showed it, started showing me call volume, uh, time out of service for this apparatus to deal with high acuity needs, second do-in apparatus, what, how much longer it takes for a second do apparatus to get it? I mean, we, he kind of went into the weeds with me and so on and that stuff. And all of a sudden it came to, it's like, this isn't a brainer. This isn't a brainer. I mean, this is, I, I see exactly, and that's now, that's current data, that's not, he didn't, we didn't even go projected increase in volume, um, or increase in book, uh, acuity for our, our apparatus or on incidents longer, out of service longer, uh, prolonged periods of time. That's where the light asset conversation goes. Whole other thing, I'm not gonna go there, but I just say that there is, I believe there's ample objective data available that I think that these guys have looked at, so I would, I don't know if for future board work sessions or whatever, if you wanna go how deep in the weeds you wanna go on a lot, you know, stuff, but I know that that meeting that we had made me feel a lot better about uh, what we're trying to do as a team, really good.
Thank you, yeah. Andrew, you have anything to add?
No, again, I'm, again, I appreciate the work that we've done on this. I think that, you know, we, we stand for a lot of the things that this will bring. We stand for the safety that this will bring. Like, we, we will be one hundred percent collaborative on this. We will put our full strength behind whatever type of, you know, ballot, ballot measure support that we need to do. Our members are fully behind this. I think that, you know, if we can continue this collaboration as we work towards what a rollout looks like, you know, what a successful, what af-, you know, post-successful levy, what a rollout looks like and we can continue to have this same type of collaboration where this is just gonna better the groundwork for the future for our uh, relationship.
This reminded me of Andrew and I had the privilege of working with a mentor a long time ago. He believed in a public agency, having the union be on the table every month. And with Jay's and with Nick's help, we had been bringing you onboard and working with you on a monthly or daily basis. And this is part of this board's belief system in inclusivity. And transparency, we are not afraid to be transparent. And, and if you now coming on the board and asking questions, we should be able to be prepared to answer. So past experiences all of us have had to be inclusive rather than divisive or me or you. And I, I, I was really impressed when Nick, we, and I talked about this and Chris stepped up and volunteered to do this, I was, I was really amazed. Uh, because this has not been ever done before. And for example, when I first came on this board, I approached one of the eleven fifty-nine, they said, you know, you, we can't talk, you are the director, I am the firefighter, we don't talk, we don't meet. We came from there, now you are sitting here and having dialogue with us, thank you. That means the district has made progress, uh, we all have made progress in our approach to administering their organization. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Jim?
Um, I think it's worth mentioning that Station Twelve and Thirteen, Station Twelve used to be a district fifty-four station. Station Thirteen was a Clark's prior district station. A lot of people may not realize that both those stations were staffed with career staff, pre-mergers in both cases. We, Chief Dieter's notes via social media, the merger was boring and, and the vote, the election with Estacada, we were criticized heavily on social media and from certain elements about that Clackamas, they get you in and then they strip those, the staffing, especially from Clark's, that's the one that we've heard about. There's an element of, of the community who criticizes us to this day. We got Clarkson and then we stripped the career staff in and now they, you know, don't have anything, so I. We got Clarkson, and then we stripped the career staffing, and now they, you know, don't have anything, so I, it'll be interesting if this did move forward. To an election, the response that you all have from those two communities, you're gonna get something back that they actually had at one time.
I guess I'd like to mention one thing. That has been this collaboration. I asked Nick to have Andrew be the union representative. Because he and I are kind of the same. We're both the new guys on the block. And I kind of got Andrew into this mess, and he's done wonderfully. When you think about. Andrew has been sitting in a meeting with his boss, and his boss's boss, and his boss's boss's boss. And participated as a full member. The other thing we might have noticed is that we asked that, we kind of pretended we were a little Las Vegas. What happened in the funding task force, stayed in the funding task force, because we didn't want people to start talking about. Preliminary discussions we were having and getting fixated on something they heard that they didn't like, that wasn't even what we had decided to do, or, you know, just a flippant comment, whatever it was. And it was a difficult thing for everyone. It was especially difficult for Andrew. And I haven't heard a single complaint or a suggestion, which means everyone in the task force stuck to what we agreed to. We sat there and worked through this, and it's part of why we got where we did. Because everybody was willing to just keep it in there and keep it just us, and just talk about it openly and fairly. And without worrying about he was gonna get stuck working night duty at the taco stand. So it has been a great effort, and Andrew has been a great member of that team, and I appreciate everything he's brought. Thanks, Chris.
Okay, so just what I need is a, is, it's not a vote, it's just a verbal consensus. From all five to just to move forward with the levy, levy process.
I thought that's what I heard.
Okay, I just wanna make sure.
Yeah. I heard it correctly that we all support this moving forward.
Awesome.
Right?
Jim? But I agree with Director Wall. It'll be nice to have similar details at some point, like the staffing, you know, yeah, I agree. We don't need four-person staffing at twelve, but three-person, you know, I'd like to, you probably say that, but. And do all stations need four? Maybe they don't, you know, so.
But then again, though, Jim, like Nick said.
Yeah.
We are not in the, this is a thirty thousand feet elevation discussion here. And we are not, we are going to, we'll go into that when appropriate time.
And also, also keep in mind that, and it's one of the things we've discussed, is this gonna be a dynamic process? Because we're kind of evaluating now. But this is gonna take, if it, if it passes, it's gonna take four or five years to get full staffing. What does it look like in four or five years? It may very well be different than what it is now. So you're, there's some science involved in what we're doing. There's gonna be some arc. And then some of it's gonna be. See your pants. Because you can't know what, you can't know what we don't know. We can't know what it's gonna be in four or five years. So we're just trying to use the very best we have right now and being ready and willing, and one thing we've talked about. Is keeping this, keeping this group going.
I don't want to close the meeting yet before. Mark and Steve, did you like to say? Couple of words as a last comment, from your perspective, or your input, or your evaluation of what the process we are going through?
Uh, no, thank you for asking. I don't, I don't have much data. I mean, my, some of my analysis and numbers are already included in the, in the presentation, so I've certainly reviewed. You know, what some of these staffing scenarios would cost and want to kind of echo, I think it was Jim's concern regarding, you know, that we, we right-size the levy so that we don't. So we're able to fund what, what we've, we've set out to fund, and so we, we're gonna work with pretty closely at the, at the numbers and the forecasts to make sure that, that we're. We're being prudent in what we're asking for and that we're using it efficiently and so on, so.
Anything to ask you?
You know, not much more to add, just, you know, I say this to Nick quite a bit, but it goes for elected officials as well. I think as leaders, and you guys are leaders, representing the community. Part of leadership is taking people places they don't want to go, and we've been able to not be in this position for a lot of years. But we're in this position, and this is an option. And I agree with everything that everybody said, that we can dial in, but I, I can also say that it, it without getting too, too down in the weeds, but we, we have addressed some of the things. That you're talking about, and we'll be able to, to show and really lay it out, like where, where this plan comes together. So, but getting to the point of just continuing is what we needed to do.
Yeah.
So I guess my ask to, especially for you two, is as we move forward on this. I, I do think it's important that we do have some to get into the weeds from a talking point standpoint, because we're gonna need, when, when people come to us and ask us questions, what are you gonna do with the money? We need to always say the same thing.
That's easy.
Well, yeah, and so, and we need to stand, we need to make sure we're standing in a certain lane, because we get upset in a lane, then we're gonna cause you grief.
Yeah.
But I don't want to do that by, by saying something that is not what everybody else is thinking. And, but I also need something to talk to people about.
Yeah, we'll give you very high, high level, high level points, because the operations will need to be damp, right? Getting into the end of the weeds, that, that can be damp, and you as a board need to stay at the higher level with that, and. And that is part of this plan, is getting that consistent message for you, getting a consistent message for crews. All of that, and that will be, that will be delivered. That way, it is a consistent message.
I don't want to miss out Brian Stewart, yes, this is sitting quietly all afternoon. Do you have anything to add?
Uh, well, just to tie it onto a couple of things that I've heard that, that I appreciate is, is Director Haas's statement about. Needing to know where you're at, if you're gonna get someplace. And I think that's just.
It is the GPS.
GPS conversation, but, but in this, it's understanding who we are and what, what the reason is that we're here. It has to do with the demographics of our organization and the communities that we serve, how we've grown from a bunch of smaller organizations to a larger. What the, the basis of the tax rate goes, there's, there's a lot of complexity to do where we've been. And we need to be able to boil that down to a conversation that's consistent, whether Director Cross delivers it, whether I deliver it. Whether someone comes up to Steve or Mark or, or Director Wall, we need to be able to deliver that consistently. And we do that by understanding what the message is to start with, and then we build from there.
Thank you. If there is nothing else to on the agenda, the meeting is now adjourned at two forty six PM. The workshop session is now adjourned.
Thank you.
And you'll remember that you have a.